... board members and staff and visitors and guests as well as Leslie Grant. I know that the board has been working diligently, as has myself and the staff with the Council of Great City Schools represented by Leslie. And I believe tonight, Leslie, you're prepared to share an update on where we are in the work? All right, I'll turn things over to you.
Yes, we'll use this as a working session so that we can just review what we've done and what we owe for, to get started on our listening sessions. Each of you, I sent you an email earlier today with some agenda points for tonight's meeting. And if we can just go through that, that would be very helpful. Does everybody have that? And I think a lot of you already filled out the form. Thank you for doing that. And is everyone here? I'm just, I can't see everybody on the screen.
Everyone, you mean all of the board members?
Yes. Board, sorry.
Well, honorable board member Terry Schuta has asked to be excluded from this board meeting.
Right.
We expect her to return back to the board at our official board meeting in two weeks. I will follow up. Dr. Evans Brown is trying to get on. I know that frustration happened many times before. And I will reach out to one of the board members and see where they are.
Okay.
Anne has sent a text saying that she was running late due to meetings that ran over, but she's coming. She's gonna get on.
Oh, thank you.
Just running late.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
So, yeah, I would like to, I guess let's start with the board, item C on the agenda first, which is the things that y'all have locus of control over, the board does first. And just see if there's anything we need to discuss around that. The form I sent you today was basically trying to capture your responses in terms of your needs for setting up your meetings. I believe I have McEckenwood, Scott, Brown, Kotman, Rivers, Hurd, McCosey. So I have, everybody has responded to that. Thank you very much. I'm gonna get a bonus for everyone completing that in time. I appreciate it. So this as well, I will share with Dr. Cresty's staff, just so that you can see where the board has indicated they're gonna need some assistance. I think we talked over all of this already in terms of where those physical locations are and where those needs might be in terms of support from central office. So I will share that with you after this. I see no indications around script. Everyone is comfortable with that, I think. If ever you do want to touch base about that, let me know. I think there are several of you, and if you want me, I can share this link with all of you later, but several of you are, I think, underway with securing your location for these meetings. Several of you have a giant list and need to reach out to those as soon as possible. But securing a location first before you solicit dates and attendees is my recommendation. And let's see. All right, so were there any questions that came up around or any pieces that you feel are really sticking points in terms of getting these meetings scheduled at all?
Well, I'll speak first. I haven't had a problem. It's just, you know, my biggest concern was not doing it last month as far as scheduling the dates. And I think this is for me or for some board members that may run into April. Hopefully it won't, but it may run into first week or so of April to try to wrap this up. But I'm more concerned with that it be done in a proper way and that it's done.
Yes, agreed. Agreed. Yes, getting it done properly is better than getting it done quickly. So, for sure. But this should be the starter bell today in terms of if you haven't already begun that process of working out your location, working out the invites. Please, 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 if you have signed up as a presenter, you don't have to do it all. You can assign the team if you want of folks, your recorder helping you, whatever you want to do with that. Your job is to bring it home. If you signed up in the presenter spot, your job is to make sure that it happens. So.
Can I interject here, Larry? Can I say something here? However, this is a team effort. Okay? And I do not want, you know, the team not working together on the, on it. So what I did today, Paulette and I went through our list. We, she selected people. She would call to inform them of what we're doing and possibly give them a date to work with us. And it turned out to be very well for the two that her and I are working on together. There's a lot more work to be done on that, but at least we talked to each other and we started working together. And I really want to encourage the partner, a partnership so that it turns out to be that it's a team effort is what it is. Okay?
Yep. Collaboration is always great, but just want to make the point again, if you signed up in that first spot, it's your responsibility to bring it home, to make sure that that happens.
I understand that, but I'm making my point that I want everyone to be able to take credit for what happens at this event. As president of the board, I want everyone to, every board member to feel that they participated in the process, and that's the reason for me saying what I said. Okay, thanks. And Terrence is here and Dr. Kathy Evans Brown is here. So we're good. We're still waiting on our board member, Revere, but she's en route, so we're good. Okay?
Anne, okay, yep. Is there anything that people want to bring up in terms of locations or needs or understandings around that in this group setting? Is there, are there any questions that you have in terms of what you're scouting for for a location to host these? And Larry, I think you have the four community quad meetings next at the, we were gonna try and put those at the backend, just as a, if anybody missed any ones that they were invited to before. So are you comfortable with how you're gonna set those up?
Yeah, so I'll have to work with staff and the schools where our parent centers are or Saturday academies are. I don't force, I don't perceive it as backend, though. I think it's something that can happen in alignment with the other meetings that are happening. I don't, I don't want it to be perceived as it's kind of the leftover of what we haven't done.
No, I want, yeah, I wouldn't say that if that's, I think, again, just having an opportunity, if some folks have, you know, missed, that there is, are these big meetings that are gonna be very inclusive. So making sure that some of that is happening at the very end.
Okay.
They don't have to, I mean, again, y'all have to figure out when you're gonna be able to get these done. Your scheduling is gonna be, you know, alongside of each other. It's gonna be, you know, it's gonna be, you're not doing this in a really linear fashion in terms of scheduling. So it's a little more complicated. But again, I would, you know, recommendation would be just make sure that as you are advertising to the larger community, they understand that they are having these big quadrant meetings, you know, at some point. The video, we had talked about doing a video to put the word out there, to get feedback from people if they are not able to attend in person, such that you wanna, you know, like spread the word around the community, social media, website are good ways to do that. We had success with that in another district. So just want to make sure is there appetite to do the video? And if so, who is gonna take charge of that project?
I thought the video was a good idea, but is that something that the district would take on since we, are we all doing our own individual videos?
No, I would recommend that you do one from the board. Y'all can choose one or two people or you can do, you know, the full, all of you if you, it's gonna take longer if you all want to be present in that. That you do that and get it, I would think the district has the equipment to record and edit that. So that would be my recommendation is that it is a board project. So someone from the board needs to manage that, but that needs to be in the works pretty soon. And then again, would have the QR code back to the form that people are gonna be filling out so that their data gets recorded that way. But again, this is an opportunity for people who aren't able to attend a meeting in person to still, you know.
Are we making sure we bring people?
Sorry, Jen, you went out for a minute. Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm in my son's house. I thought the video was a really good idea to promote on social media and, you know, it's, it'd be a fantastic recruiting tool to these places and to all of our meetings, but I wanna see what the board thinks. And then maybe in this call, we can choose who's gonna do the video and just kinda at least get that piece started, because this has to go out sooner and later. That's my recommendation.
I like the idea of a video as well, because it can work a couple of, for a couple of reasons, what Jen talked about. I knew Leslie, but also just promoting the fact that we're embarking on this initiative overall, you know, in this district. So, yeah, I do think the president need to be involved in that video along with whoever else.
So I guess I'm asking for a video production manager, video production owner on the board to wrangle that process. Again, I'm hoping.
I'll volunteer.
Dr. Evans Brown, thank you. All right.
So we do have staff. Dr. Williams, do you think, I've worked with Keith on this on numerous occasions, he's done plenty of videos, that he can assist us with this and get that project done?
Absolutely.
From the staff side, so Dr. Evans Brown, would you reach out? Can I connect you with Dr. Williams? Y'all make sure that y'all talk really soon after this, just to understand, like, is it a, you know, is there a studio setup where board members could come by and just get it done? What's their, you know, what's their timeframe on editing something like that?
All right. Hold on, let me see.
Because it's not network.
Yes, I can reach out tomorrow and we can start to, you know, have that conversation and get something set up.
Okay. Yeah, you would want to do it such that you have, get, I would, you know, get it done as soon as you can. You want it to go out before you've, you know, finished all the meetings, of course. It is a, it is a way, again, to gather from people who aren't able to attend, but you don't want it to come out completely after all the meetings, right? So we're not gonna, I'll help with a script for that. We won't have reference to any particular meeting, because we don't want it to be out of date the minute it gets done. So, but I'll work with that. And so, Dr. Evans, uh huh?
So Leslie, I just want to be sure. So the district is not creating the vision for the video, but we are creating the opportunity for, you know, the production and the taping of it and all of that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, behind the camera, all the, so the filming, location, editing capabilities, and then upload. Yeah.
I'm sorry, Leslie. I've been on board, I had some connectivity problems. I've been on since the beginning, though. My question about the video is that I thought that we were supposed to have three people from every organization that we're hosting on. That was the last thing I heard. So the three people in the organization, what would the purpose of a video be? Or is the video for community purposes?
The video is to share your message around why you're doing this. So, and to collect responses from people who aren't able to attend. So it's the board telling people why you're doing this. And then you'd have a QR code at the end that goes to the form that everyone's gonna be filling out so that people who aren't afforded the opportunity to attend one of the meetings, for whatever reason, are still able to participate with the link and get a little bit of FaceTime, you know, explaining that. So it's not just a, here's an email, fill out this link. So.
Okay, my question is, the video is going out to the organizations that we're going to reach or is it going out to the public?
Yeah, it would be out to the public.
But if the public can't attend the meeting, why, if it's only three people per organization that's going to the meeting, why would the, we send it out to the public when it's just really the organizational meetings?
I think I'm not understanding your question. Sorry.
From my understanding, we have to, for each organization that we reaching out to, we have to have at least three people from those organizations, no more than three people?
No.
No? So.
I mean, if there's one, if there's only one person that's able to come from an organization, that's fine. If they have, you know, multiples that want to come, that would be fine, too. I wouldn't, yeah.
So if 10 or 15, 20 people from an organization would like to come, that's okay?
Yeah, you want to hear from as many people as possible.
Okay, that's what I was thinking. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And the video is just another tool to gather input.
So that's kind of contradictory to what I had asked in our meeting, because if you have a group, such as number one, that has a bunch of people, if 10 to 20 people from each of those organizations show up, I'm gonna need a venue the size of, like, you know, the convention center. So I had asked, should it be, you know, maybe three people from each organization for the larger meetings? And the response I got was, yeah, that sounds, you know, that sounds right. So I just want to make sure that I didn't, because I, Terrence and I are partnering on something we talked already. So I'd kind of put that out there to them, and I didn't want to confuse the situation.
Yeah, I mean, again, I don't think there's a hard and fast three people rule. You know, if you're, if you have an organization within that group, that is a very large group. They're there because they're a like-kind organization. If y'all want to split that group up and have, you know, a couple of meetings after you've done a little outreach and find that, you know, one of the organizations is just gonna blast you with 100 people, you can do that. You know, I would think that, you know, the leadership would be able to communicate with the rest of the folks in the organization. You don't want people to feel as if they're not being listened to. This is the point of this, is that you have a good read from the community. So I think that's up to y'all. That's a, that is a giant group, but that is up to you. But I would not say, you know, I would just not lock it down at three people, but.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Terrence, there you go. My bad.
Okay, now I understand more clearly. Thank you so much.
Yeah, so Dr. Evans Brown, you'll take care of getting the video working. I will, again, help you with a script for that and get the form and a QR code prepared for y'all, okay? And y'all need to decide who's, yeah.
So any other hands up? My hand is up. I have a question or statement. I feel that to make sure that we maximize our ability to communicate in a good way, that we think about what meetings or which meetings we should have advertise interpreters are going to be there. And, or do we ask them RSVP if they need an interpreter? You know what? I'm just trying to figure out how does that look? Because I do not want to bring the interpreters out if they, there are not going to be any need or we don't have staff available or parents are not gonna be there. So I wanted, like, an idea. Thank you, Dr. Revere, for tuning in. We were waiting on you. And so that's my question, what, how do you feel about the, bringing our Ls and having interpreters for them at the meetings? Do you think we should advertise solely that we're going to have them at certain meetings and let them know upfront? Or should we have people RSVP and then have to bring, bring them in? I need some ideas on that, board members, because that's something that we need to work on.
So I think, first of all, my apologies. Do you hear me now?
Yeah, I hear you.
First of all, I apologize, I did text. So if it didn't go through, my apologies. So I think that the first ones that we really need to focus on are the ones where parents will be. Those are ones that we want to direct, to my mind, more translators to increase the access so they don't have to RSVP. So that's not considered a barrier and we can get folks out there. And then every other group can RSVP. And I think, I think that might be a way to do a little bit of both, but I'd appreciate my colleagues' thoughts.
Thank you.
I have the group number three that I'm presenting, and it's like labeled cultural. So I'm assuming that it would be something that we would target, you know, a lot of interpreters to. But I agree with my colleague with Dr. Rivera that the parents, the groups that would have more parent-based, so the community groups, which I also am presenting, I think would be key. I'll find out when I reach out to all the groups. I will say that, and board member Hurricane attested this, we went to the transportation forum last night, and it wasn't very well attended, but the parents who did show, none of them spoke English. There might have been 10 parents, and then we needed translation in three different languages. So thank God for Google Translate. But that's just, you know, giving a little indication of where we might be heading with these meetings.
Okay. Piggybacking off of that, a lot more people came afterwards, but I would just like to ask, are we looking for translators from the district or are we like independent translators? There's one gentleman there last night who spoke four different languages, and he was able to translate to those, to those families. So are we looking for independent translators? Are we apt to hire community translators for this purpose?
I don't know if we can hire independent translators, but we do have a team of cultural resource specialists. We could pay some teacher aides, you know, if we needed to. So the district is prepared. If you need translators, just let me know.
Okay, thank you.
So, so does anyone have anything else to say? Because, so that's what it appears to be, that we will focus in to make sure we don't have an additional barrier. And your thoughts and my thoughts are very similar. I just wanted to put it out before the board, because I wanted to make sure that we are aware that, of who we have. I don't know how meetings 12, 13, 14, and 15 will roll out as far as having translators. I do know that if that gentleman, Mr. Hurd, is available, maybe he should apply if there's a position that becomes available with the people. I think we use Jericho Rhodes is who we use for this, as our, as our community partner for our interpreters. Okay, so that's good.
Yeah, and so in terms of, again, when you get the location secured, there is a need for AV. You'll have the district, we talked with Dr. Cresty's the other day, and there's, there will be some paperwork that needs to be printed and shared. There were, a couple of you were indicating that you would like to have the PowerPoint printed as well as available on screen so that people can look at that on their table if they want. So y'all would need to get a count of how many documents you need for those meetings. But again, having AV available so that there's a ability to do a projector is a component you'll need for the location. All right, so we have an email draft that went, it was drafted there. You are free to use that. I would make sure that you don't drop any important pieces of that. You can customize that and put your own touch and language in that if you want. But again, make sure that people understand why they're coming to the meeting, the specificity of this meeting. It's not just a, you know, an open call for anything that people wanted to talk about. It's gonna be very specific around this big picture vision. So make sure that you don't change the nature of the email too much from there. And let's see. Does anybody see any issue trying to get hard decisions made around locations by the a week from now? That means you have to have reached out to most of your groups, you know, the location and dates. Any of you who are in the presenter position, do you have a, do you think that's a deadline you could make?
I think it can happen with the help of the recorder, as Paulette has been, has helped me today. I think it'll work fine. Teamwork makes a dream work. And I think we'll get it done. And I'll be reaching out to the other two people who I'm working with, Dr. Revere and Larry Scott. And we'll be formulating what we're gonna do in regards to that as well.
Okay.
Leslie, this is Will. Just a point for board members to consider, and that is, as you're identifying your locations, your dates mostly, if you could be mindful of the district calendar, there's a very easy way to do that. If you just go to the homepage of the district and you go to the calendar, you just scroll, it literally shows you all the events that are going on each day in March. Wherever possible, if it can be done, you'll want to stay away from days that, or evenings that have, you know, a couple of events already, because that means staff that likely would be supporting this effort already has a previous commitment. Doesn't mean it's impossible. It'll just make it a little harder to fulfill the request. So if you haven't yet set up all your dates, just a favor, if you could scroll through all the dates of the district calendar, and if you can, try to stay away from the heavily populated evenings for March.
Thank you, Dr. K. That's good advice.
All right, so again, everybody, if you don't already have the button pushed for get started on scheduling these meetings, please push that now so we can get that done again a week. Give you a week would be great. As you said to begin with, I think this is, if we can get this, you know, these done, scheduled, happening and concluded by mid-April, that's fine. This is gonna, you know.
I do have a question.
Um, as soon as you can. Yes, sir?
Under, under a bracket number nine, it has all community centers. So we have a number of community centers here in the city of Buffalo, and I believe that those centers might want to have their, you know, program there or have it, you know, at their community center. So it's just a matter of whether should, should we separate this to different days? Or should we just look at each community center and try and invite those if it goes to one location?
Sorry, who's on, who's on that one real quick?
I believe I have that one, Leslie. It's Cindy. And Terrence, my plan was to send it out to all of the folks that operate the community center individually, so each one of them gets that, and then they can disseminate to their staff teams if they have staff teams, and they can plan on attending one meeting, not at the community center, but held at a separate location.
Okay. Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Okay. Yeah, I think that, you know, like making sure that turf is shared and all that kind of thing is good to be conscientious of, so, good. Okay, so last call on the script. I just want to make sure, if you're delivering the script, the importance of having that and only that be the topic of conversation during these meetings. The, you know, I guess opening it up to other things will get you way off path. Your data will come back looking much different than everybody else's. So affording everyone that you talk to, everyone you outreach to, the same opportunity to give feedback on the thing that you are saying is most important right now is really crucially important, and that will not happen if you have a, you know, a lot of script wander. So just putting that out there. All right, now I'm gonna go back up. So advertising the listening sessions, once we get the video done, that, again, is something that could be shared by social media. You have a slider on your, the homepage of the website, Dr. Williams. So I just want to make sure there's coordination with somebody with comms in your department so that that, the messaging around this can get out and wide, probably maybe, you know, a little flyers or something, just talking big picture of what the board is doing. And again, we can help with the messaging. And again, we can help with the messaging there. But just making sure that, yeah.
We can do that.
Okay. I don't think that will be terribly time intensive, but I just want to make sure that, that's there for the staff. So the data sheet, we had that done, superintendent submitted that and you all got a copy of that. The point of the data sheet is to inform yourselves and the community of, you know, like what current student outcomes are. What are the, what, where's the, what are we working from? Why are we doing this work? And the reality for students in the district right now. So I just want, if you all have not had a chance to look at that, just do so. And any thinking around that, are you? Is it understood? I, I don't know if I gotta, I was asking about the numerator and denominator, what those numbers represented. Just to make sure that that's clearly understood.
Is that something that is going to be handed out?
It should be something that, that, yeah, folks have at the table. Yeah.
I think that, I think that we need to talk about that. And I've spoken to two more, two board members shortly before the meeting started about this. And I think that in moving forward, I think we need to have a conversation about this. Timing is everything. And I would choose at another point to do it, but not right now.
So I do, I would encourage you to have, you know, have that conversation now. I realize the, there needs to be some understanding about the current reality in the district for students, their current learning. So I think having an understanding about what the board is, you know, is, the board's understanding is this. This is not my data sheet. This is not the superintendent's data sheet. This is the board talking to the public about the current reality for students.
Yeah, I think the reality is the reality. And I think we need to begin to, we know that we are conscious of how it's important to move a needle in student outcome. And it needs to continue to be moved. And, and we need to inform folk of what, why we're here.
Okay, for, for point of clarity, Leslie, is there anything specific that, that you feel that we need to address or say or, or for understanding? Is there any points that you would like to give us?
I, I think you need to have a, I think you all need to have a knowledge about where people are, where students are in the district, what the current, you know, landscape is for students and their outcomes in the district. Because if you're going and asking people like what their vision is, you know, like where do you want to go in the future? You have to have some common understanding about where you are right now. And so that is the point of requesting a data sheet like this so that it, and there's a, you know, potential for narrative on this if you need that. But the, you know, the reality is what it is. And having a board that's committed to changing the, you know, changing things so that they're not stagnant, so that the status quo is not okay is what y'all stood up to, you know, commit to doing.
Okay, so, so I'm just trying to get a, a clear understanding. So the data sheet would be for the board use only and not for presentation?
You would, you would have this at the meetings. Yeah, you would have this available to the public.
Okay.
You're asking the public to engage with you in a conversation about what they want for student outcomes. Understanding the current situation with student outcomes is an important baseline understanding.
But what I see is that if we hand out the data sheets, it's going to bring up a slew of questions in which we are not allowed to answer. So with this data sheet, will it, it'll go to responsibility of a district administrator to answer those questions? Because board members, we will have to stick to our scripts.
So, all right, so, okay, good question. What is it in this current, in the current data sheet that y'all don't understand? Because if you don't understand it and you can't explain it, then the parents will not understand it and they are going to be left on the side.
But I'm not trying, I'm not trying to be difficult, but.
No, 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 I'm saying that's a good point.
The scripts, we're sticking to the script. We won't be able to read off the data sheet or give information.
No, I don't think you need to, yeah, there's, I think in the script it says you've got data on the current reality for the district. So that would be given to people. They could read it. You're not going to go on, you're not going to go line by line on this. But again, if it's, if, if looking at this, you're not able to quickly, you know, discern what the information you're sharing is, that needs to be cleared up.
Okay, thank you. I think we had a hand raised at City Hall. And Ms. Woods?
Yeah. I have my hand raised up here at City Hall. So I, I, I'm just looking at this data sheet now and it's data from the DIBELS. And it's, it's basically how students have performed on the DIBELS and the I Ready for Math. And then the graduation rate. It's based on the goals that we've already established and the measure that we're using to measure the progress of those goals. And we're giving this to people that are attending. And to me, it's kind of creating a preconceived view that they're going to respond to. You know, the, my interpretation of these community meetings is you're going in kind of, it's a blank slate and you're allowing the community to inform what they want their goals to be. And it might not be that they want their children to do better on a DIBELS test. It might be that they want them to be proficient in art or in music, in technology. So when we're just looking, if that, this is what we're providing everybody that's attending these community meetings, it's kind of setting the stage for them to hyper-focus on these numbers and then only then provide feedback on those numbers. And they may have bigger, different, more robust values for what they want to see in our school system and with, with our children.
Well, I do think that is the point. They should want to see more robust values. The reason for showing them what the current reality is, is so they understand what you're starting from. In terms of y'all understanding, is there a common commitment from the larger community when you've done this listening around a specific population? So if you're, you know, looking at eighth grade, ELA, you know, like where are you in terms of that? Is there, you know, one population that, you know, you really should concentrate and hone in on? You know, that's what we're trying to get to here. So that's what the point of having data is, is so you're not, you're not stepping in and asking people, do you want students to perform better on a test? That is not what you're asking. You are sharing with people the current reality for what, what's happening with students in the district, right? You're going to take the, what they get from that, you are asking them about what, where they want students to be in the future. But not providing that, if this is a, if there's different data or different information or a different way that y'all need it shown, then you need to, you know, this is your conversation to have with your superintendent.
I, I guess I'm just uneasy with providing that data and assuming that that's what they want to see and then leading them in the direction to then only shape their values and vision based on that data. When there's just so much data, so much data out there. I mean, it could be, it could be suspension data. They may be concerned about suspension rates and we're not providing that data here. So it's like we're leading them to kind of only react and provide feedback based on this data when there's just so much out there that's quantitative, quantitative data, but also qualitative information that they may want to provide feedback on.
So I will say, we've had an opportunity to weigh in on this. You know, this has been a, you know, request for a while. What you have here is you have K-2, 3, 8 in high school. You've got some information on the full range of students you serve. You've got ELA in math, which are the big twos, right? Is there a college and career readiness indicator you would like? If there's something else that you all as the board would like to share with the public, you should do so. I would highly recommend not going out with any information about the district. So that is your decision. This is your process. We are coaching and guiding.
Thank you. Thank you. Good point, Larry. Leaning down, the road that I'm moving down in regards to this situation. Board member Woods, without, you know, we talked earlier a little bit about it.
I already, I already said, I already said to you when we spoke earlier that I looked at that data and saw African-Americans.
I, please don't disclose the data at this point. Thank you.
Well, anyway, well, when I looked, when I looked at that data, I was shocked. And I think that the public does have a right to receive the data. I thought we said we were going to send it out early so that people had it and already could digest it so it wouldn't be just the main focus of our meetings. But I do think that that data is going to bring up a lot of conversation, an awful lot of conversation.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer, is your hand up? No? Okay, so let me be clear on where I stand.
Jennifer, sorry.
Your hand was up as it went down. Okay, Jennifer, okay, go ahead. I thought so.
So on this point, I'd like to just make sure that, I think Larry has a fantastic point. It's, it's not covering everything. And I'll be honest with you, I did not know what the superintendent was going to bring when it came to what we were looking for. So I understand and I think that this data is definitely what we need. But the door needs to be opened a little bit for the other stuff too. This is leading and I don't know if it's a, if it's a statement that, you know, here's where we are, here's our current reality. And we also would like your feedback on, you know, I, I feel like it'll open the door if we'd also like your feedback on this, that, and the third. But it, it does kind of, I, I think we need to have another avenue or put it on the email, the QR code that if there's anything we didn't touch, please, you know, we need to open that door because this is very leading into, and we're presenting this data. It's going to be the focus. It's already going to have its questions. It's already going to have its conversation.
That's it.
But I don't want to miss out on the opportunity to talk about the arts and technology and social emotional wellness and all of the things that are, I mean, our learning loss is based on more than the DIBELS test. Our learning loss has been based on our social emotional wellness 100% on top of what everybody else has been dealing with outside of just our numbers, right? So I 100% appreciate the data. I'm not saying scrap and I'm not disregarding what it is and, and I appreciate the hard work that went into it. But there should also be in our script that we have this and there's so much more to cover. Like Larry said, there's such a, you know, you use bigger words that I'm not down with right now. It's after five. You know, put, you know, put it out there that we have, you know, we, we are focusing on other things too. We want to hear you on everything. So I don't know how to do that. I just wanted to really stress that point. And if it's in that QR code that we really hone in on what we were missing and maybe even lead that into, you know, social emotional whatever. But I feel like we're going to limit a lot of conversation.
So you have a what students know or are able to do. That's what we're trying to get people to focus on, right? In terms of it being an outcome for students. And the values that you're trying to capture, the guardrails we talk about. So that would capture, I would think, you know, if there are social, emotional, you know, concerns, supports, whatnot, those would be there. So I think having, you know, if there's additional, if there's something additional you want to, in terms of this sheet, or it is up to y'all. You need to have some understanding that you take to the community. It is in your hands if you are, you know, willing to, you know, you want to add a narrative to this, something else, that's fine. I did have, I, I requested that the numbers be put on there. In perens, there's a, I'm not quite sure how these are working yet. But in terms of understanding what percentage of each grade is in which demographic so that you can see, is that a real house on fire with the number it's at right now? You know, like you can wait your understanding, the community can wait their understanding about where the big, you know, the big needs are. So the biggest needs are.
Okay, thank you for that. So my concerns are simple, okay? Those of us that have true skin in the game have known that there is nothing new about these numbers. Okay, they've existed, whether you wanted to know they existed or not, all you had to do was bring them up and look at them. They've been out there. I'm more concerned about the image that it paints of, of, of the work that's doing. My granddaughter is in the third, third grade. I have a grandson that's in the sixth grade and he's reading at probably a seventh or eighth grade rate. That's not reflected in the numbers. But he stands to be tied into a group of students that does not reflect who he actually is. I'm concerned about the narrative that goes out with anything that happens with Buffalo Public Schools. And I think that as a board, we can figure out how to handle this situation, disclose information and still make sure that the integrity for all children are maintained. And that's what my concern is. Whenever Buffalo Public Schools, no one else is disclosing their dirty laundry, no one. Okay, we're in the process of letting things out, but somehow or another, it ends up being the narrative for our children. And it's not right. It's not right. And we have to make sure whatever we put out, that we frame it and we put it in perspective. And that's something that the board will decide on how to do. We appreciate, you know, that we have the information. How do we move it forward is the next thing. But at the end of the day, okay, when our children are being looked at, I do not want them to be stereotyped or, or boxed in. And I think there's a lot of things that could also be disclosed in that situation, but we won't get into it at this time. We want to be mindful of the time that we have. But I think there's a bigger conversation and we'll have it probably under executive support next week when, when I have the time to have that conversation with the board.
Is there any way to make this look like it says where the progress has been made? Because it's a pretty ugly data sheet.
Whatever it is or it isn't, it's facts, okay? That's the point.
But it didn't say anything like, okay, look how much progress we've moved ahead. That, that first sheet might, we should have a narrative of something positive.
Well, that will come. I think the reality is, is what it is. And it's a quote from W.E.V. Du Bois. I read this, I saw it on this yesterday. And it says, "We should measure the prosperity of a nation, not by the number of millionaires, but that by the absence of poverty, the prevalence of health, the efficiency of the Buffalo, of the public schools and the number of people who can, can and do read worthwhile books." So y'all remember, we had a data conversation. And Dr. Williams and her team presented the data on third grade ELA proficiency and math as well as graduation. The public got that information. So my thinking is this. Let's use what we already put out. All of this other stuff, I think it's just too much at this point. And I agree that when we go into these listening tours and provide that information, that's going to be the conversation. It's going to, it's kind of just, just morph everything that we're trying to do. And so I agree that we as a board need to go into executive session next week and minimize. go into executive session next week and minimize this information, period.
Okay. We can't go into executive session to talk this. This is not an executive session issue.
That's what you said.
No, no, no. I said, I said educational support next week. That's the, I didn't, I don't think I said executive session. I thought I said educational support. I'm, I thought, yeah, next, I'm, I'm running the educational support meeting next week. That's what we would.
Talk about it then. I thought you said executive.
Yeah, no, I just want to clear that up. No, we wouldn't go on executive session for that.
I just want to make sure that there's a timeline that we are going to disseminate this information because I don't want to be held or looked at as, as a person who, or a board member or elected official that withheld information from the public. So just so that we get a understanding that this is the information, these artifacts, and these are the things that we got to build on and work on. And that's why we gave our guardrails and goals so that we can overachieve this and have our students, you know, receive the best possible education that we can give them. So I do understand, you know, this conversation and the purpose, but long as we have a clear guideline that we can get information to the public and we, so that we can receive the type of help that we need.
Okay, so we start every day with the data dashboard. I don't know if you've been on it lately, but it's certainly disclosed.
I'm always on it.
Then you, then you should know it. It discloses more information than anyone else in, in, in this region discloses. So there's not the implication that someone is trying not to disclose information. That is not what's happening here. Okay, so I want to be clear on that. No one discloses information like we disclose information. And we sell enough newspapers to do it. And that's what this is about. How do we make sure that we handle this in a proper way and, and we get to the next level? And information, and a year from now, we'll be looking at it to see what has improved or what has not improved or whatever, whenever we agree to do it. But we need to talk about the brand and be clear, no one discloses more information in Buffalo Public Schools. Thank you.
Under our current superintendent, thank you.
Under our current superintendent. And the interesting thing about this is we're just learning how to do this. This has not been what we've been doing over the past X amount of years. And so if there's room for improvement, we certainly do. But what, what was not going to happen is that it's a tool that is used against us and not for us. And so we have to control that dialogue. Dr. Williams, do you have anything that you'd like to share on this before we wrap this up? Because the reason I did not want to get into this at this point is because I wanted to do it next week when we would have more different information and you would have been able to talk to us about it. And that was the reason for me saying that I did not want to go down that road today. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I would just like to say that, you know, I do think it can be a little bit challenging when we, at one snapshot, with, you know, one piece of data are measuring, you know, students and their abilities. We just left Albany last week, and there's a Blue Ribbon Committee that has been working throughout the state to allow students different pathways to demonstrate proficiency and success. And so I think that that's a little bit challenging to just take one snapshot on one test on one day and let that paint how our children are doing. I agree with everything that was said. We in this district share so much data that sometimes it has come back to bite us. But none of us has been afraid. We have accepted that. You know, that's the only way that you interrupt cycles is to say what it is. And I think we've done that through our data dashboard. Just about every board meeting that we've had this year, we've been very transparent about the data. I do believe in sharing a narrative about the data. The data didn't just get this way. We're coming out of a pandemic, just like everyone across this country. And every superintendent that I speak to, and I speak to quite a few locally, are experiencing many of the same things we are. We just did an interview with a newspaper that shared that Buffalo Public Schools and Niagara Falls Public Schools' third graders, who are economically disadvantaged, outscored all of the suburban districts around. And they wanted to know how we did it. But when we present something that says a certain percentage, it looks like a low percentage, but comparatively, comparatively, our economically disadvantaged third graders, and it'll come out in this news report, you know, our outscoring. So I, I just caution us from, you know, just sharing this information because whatever we hand out, we can expect is going to get out. I don't mind it being talking points, but I am concerned about, you know, us handing out information to folks that may not have or understand the narrative behind the information that we're handing out. Because once we get it out, it'll, it'll go to people who weren't even at the meeting, and they will create opinions about what they see. So we've done a lot of work in this district over the last two or three years to shift the narrative about Buffalo Public Schools. And I just, you know, I don't want us to go backwards because we are making progress. We are not where we want to be. We have a lot of work to do. I think we all acknowledge that. But I'm concerned about us going back and having to, instead of dealing with the questions that you're asking and the vision that folks will come with, dealing with these numbers again.
So again, it's important to have some understanding to allow the public to have an understanding of why you are deciding as a board to change the way you govern so that you can get improved student outcomes in the long run. It's important that you have some baseline data for the public to look at. Sharing a data dashboard is like throwing a bunch of pieces of rice on the ground and telling them to pick out which one suits them for the day. You have to have a specific, you know, targeted understanding, a snapshot about where you are at some point in time. If it doesn't look like this, that is fine. If it is some more narrative, that is fine. But having, not providing that is going to, you know, I mean, again, it just, it doesn't give an understanding. Having it, you know, such that it is understandable, it is, you know, logical for any parent, you know, like knock on the door and go ask a parent, what does this mean to you? I think that's worthy of the time. So again, this has been a, a piece of information that you need for this work. If there's some other way you want to craft it, that is fine. I would highly recommend that you get this, you know, again, we've been going back and forth on this for a long time. And I just want to make sure if the board is not satisfied with this, y'all collectively, then you get straight on what you are satisfied with. So the community has an understanding about the population of students right now. So that is, that deadline is tighter than any of the rest we have tonight, just saying, so. All right, we are out of time for me, I believe. Y'all had a finance. So what are you, any other questions around this?
I don't see any other hands.
No other hands are up. Thank you so much, Ms. Grant.
Okay.
We appreciate you, and we have a great evening. Thank you for participating tonight. Thank you. With that said, we will move to our next committee meeting. Finance and Operations, Cindy McKetchin and our Chief Financial Officer. Madam Superintendent, do you have anything you'd like to say prior to the start?
I would just start by saying that, you know, Madam President and I went last week to Albany, and we got to share with quite a few of our state legislators and Assembly and Senators what our priorities are for the district, what the needs are in our district, what our children deserve. And we know that, you know, we were part of the Big Five. And so there were the other Big Five, New York State School Districts, as well as, I think it was Mount Vernon and Albany that were also there. There were about seven school districts that were represented. And many of them are experiencing the very same things that we are, you know, with this cliff that we're approaching. But, you know, we're really in a better position than some of the other districts are, all of the other districts are. And I want to give kudos to our Department of Finance and HR and our OSLs and everyone that has been working on this because, you know, it's going to be a difficult year, but we are being real thoughtful, real strategic. We will continue working with our principals. And, you know, I'm asking folks that are contacting me to please be patient and to allow the process to begin to roll out. We don't even have a state budget approved yet. So we, we don't have confirmation on what it is we will receive. But I know that Chief Barnes tonight will do a great job in explaining exactly where we are. Once again, we're being transparent. We're being transparent. And at the bottom of this cover sheet, you see that we're focusing on equity for all in all that we do. So that'll be a big part of how the budget will roll out this year. Chief Barnes?
Thank you, Superintendent. Good evening, everybody. So tonight's presentation is titled "The School-Based Budgets and the 24-25 Budget Updates." I did ask Maria Ward, our Director of Staffing for Budget, a better title, she's the School-Based Budget Person, who handles all the budgeting with principals and the SBMTs. Ed Mier, next slide, please.
Super, thanks for that informative introduction. We always post the three goals from the Superintendent. Do you have any additional comments there, Superintendent?
No, I think we've talked a lot about, you know, what our goals are. I think everyone is aware of what the goals are. So these are the goals that are guiding the budget process as we're moving through.
Okay. Ed Mier, next slide, please.
Excuse me, I, I think I, I broke protocol, and I don't want to disrespect our chair. Cindy, I'm sorry with filling in for Kathy at the time. I sort of maybe overstepped. Is there anything that you want to say before we start this?
No, I actually think I'll probably have a comment when Jim's done, and I might close this out.
Okay, thank you. I just didn't want to disrespect you. Thank you.
You can go ahead and get started, but I'm, I'm excited to hear what he has to say regarding.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, Ed Mier, next slide, please. As always, we're going to state the objectives for tonight. First, one of the things we're going to do is show the big picture with rightsizing the district resources. I don't want that to be a vague statement, but what we're going to talk about are the, the district's facing structural problems with the drops in enrollments and the total staffing, as well as financial problems. We'll talk a little bit more about that. We're going to reiterate the data related to what we're calling post ARPAS or budgeting. And we're going to start tying these conversations into our four-year plan. We're going to have an explicit review of the Level One budget, the summary, the revenues, the expenditures. I think we need a better understanding of this critical starting point if we're going to chart an effective course forward during the Level Two, Level Three of the budget process. We're going to identify the current status of the Level Two budget process. We're making progress, and you'll hear that tonight. Then we're going to discuss the school-based budget and give you background information on the process, the actual formulas used. And personally, you know, that's a very important part of the budget, maybe the most important. But it's also to combat some misinformation that's going around. Then we'll begin discussing our updated four-year plan. The important point here is we don't manage our district's finances year to year. That would be a very reactionary, you're always responding to the crisis of the day. We manage it through our four-year plan, which projects out the consequences of the decisions made every budget year. Then I'll summarize the comments and the big takeaways. Ed Mier, next slide, please. Because this year is so unique, I find it very helpful to have a few bullet points to cover the big picture. The two biggest challenges facing the district are the loss of 90 million ARPAS revenues and aligning our total staff counts to enrollment decreases that all districts across the state and the country are facing. Our enrollment's are down 3,400 over the past five years. This mirrors trends throughout the country. The 24-25 budget process will address the district's structural challenges, which I just outlined, which are enrollment-driven. And we're going to ensure the continuation of a strong four-year plan. The decisions we make this budget year are going to impact the district's future. Big picture, Level One budget shows $101 million deficit and an increase of 350 budgeted staff. It's a starting point, it's a worst-case scenario, and it's unsustainable. Our jobs during the remaining levels of the budget process are to reduce those FTE counts and reduce that deficit. I wanted to stress that $101 million again because I think it's being confused with the 90 million loss in revenues. We lost 90 million in revenues. That's just one part of the variables that go into the $101 million deficit. Other revenue margins are changes. Other expenditures between FTEs are changing. You'll see some of that tonight. The Level Two budget process is underway, and as the Superintendent stresses, we're embarked upon a process, and our process has proven to work out every year. And it's going well in the current year as far as gathering the data to be analyzed by the board. Department budgets are due back March 15th. All we're requesting from these departments are to have flat non-staff expenditures. The school-based budget books are due back March 11th. And across the district, 34 classrooms are being consolidated due to lower-than-expected enrollments. Again, a little bit of the misinformation. This will result in an average class size of 21 throughout the district. Not 30, not 29, 21. And we're not accepting unbudgeted requests at this point in the budget process. As I'll touch on in a little bit. Sort of unbridled unbudgeted requests over the past several years is one of the reasons we got in this current situation. We have a plan to mitigate and avoid layoffs. This is, again, touching on what the Superintendent says. We are in a better position than most, if not all, districts to handle both the financial cliff of the loss of ARPAS revenues, but to begin addressing our structural problems due to the drop in enrollments. Every district is facing those two issues. We are in a better position to handle it than most. Rather than just cut the 300 or so FTEs in the ARP grant, we've chosen another way to address that problem. We have to get those FTEs out of the budget to align with the lower enrollments. But we have implemented a hiring freeze, except for essential positions. We're cutting non-mandated vacancies at both the central office and the schools as best we can. No unbudgeted requests during the school-based budget process at this time. After we explain the school-based budget process, I think you'll understand why. And we always have the use of projected retirements if we don't get as far towards our goals near the end of the budget. I want to sort of end with this last one because it combats the misinformation and some of the other feedback I see, hear, and read. The Superintendent is, I, I meet with her once a week, twice a week on these budget issues. Our goal of cutting 300 FTEs, but the structural changes that have to be made. The Superintendent is keenly aware of the needs of our students, schools, and departments. And she's more committed than anyone to provide the resources to meet those needs in the 24-25 budget. That is always her first priority when we speak. And I'd like to add a comment. These big inflection points have been thrown in the lap of the Superintendent. She is the one that really is dealing with our structural problems and our financial issues from ARPAS. These issues have been bubbling up for years, and only unprecedented state and federal aid has sort of masked our desire to address them. Now, it's an inflection. them. Now, it's an inflection point. They have to be addressed. And I speak for the Finance Department. We appreciate her inquisitive nature during the different budget updates, but also her level-headedness in addressing this, especially in the face of infuriating misinformation. Edmire, next slide, please. Go back one, please. Edmire, please go back a slide. Hey, Edmire, could you go back one slide?
You did.
No, thank you, Edmire. All right, so again, I'm going to give you a little more detail on what Level 1 is, because we need to understand this critical starting point of our budget process. And it's not to be confused with the $90 million loss in ESSER revenues. That's just one part of this. So the column in yellow, this is what we call our Level 1 budget. We're going to look at some of the revenue and expenditure items on the next two slides. We're projecting $1 billion, $79 billion in revenues compared to the current year budget of $1 billion, $65 million. That's a 14.4 or 1.35% increase. I'm sorry. Then the next slide is the expenditures. Right now, in Level 1, we're projecting $1.18 billion compared to the current year of $1 billion, $102. That's a $77 million increase, or 7%. So we're projecting our revenues to go up 1.4 and our expenditures to go up 7%. That results in a deficit of $101 million. That's the number we're trying to chisel away at during Level 2 and Level 3 of the budget process. To emphasize again what's in Level 1, it's a worst-case unsustainable situation. It's like we're walking away from the problems. This includes moving all 313 ARP-funded positions into the general fund and taking no action on reducing staff and other areas. So it's a $101 million deficit. That's what we're trying to chisel away at. This is $72 million greater than the deficit projected in our four-year plan, and we're going to start talking about our four-year plan tonight and in every other budget meeting. The current four-year plan calls for a deficit of $29 million. Again, to stress, the Level 1 budget deficit and expenditures you see there includes all ARP-funded positions and all current vacancies. It's like we just wash our hands of the problems and walk away. We're not going to do that, but... Edmire, next slide. I'm going to take a little, provide a little more detail on the revenue and expenditures. For Level 1 budget revenues, I broke them down into these seven categories. We're expecting the same amount, $70 million, from the city. Our earfront transfers, it's in a commentary, that is mainly the amount of cash allocations we receive from every grant that we get. Typically, about 2.5% of every grant is transferred into the general fund to cover overhead areas. That is budgeted to go down $8 million. The reason, ironically, it's because of the loss, the ending of the ARPES grant. We were getting about $8 million to $10 million a year in indirect cost in the general fund. Medicaid, we're conservatively budgeting, it stays the same. All other state aid, about 30 other categories, basically flat. Sales tax, we're projecting a $2.8 million increase. State aid, the first run at the WO's budget, we did okay. We're up $18.5 million, or 2%. Then tuitions from other districts, not two, are projected to go up about $700 million as part of our revenue initiatives. Please note, the revenue numbers appear as negatives on this chart, because I pulled it quickly from the MUNIS system. The Level 1 revenues, again, are expected to go up $14 million. State aid revenues are expected to go up about $19 million. During Level 2, we may receive the final state budget revenue numbers. Edmire, next slide. Now we're going to take a look at what's in the Level 1 expenditures. I have detailed reports, but I think they are not the most useful reports at this time. Our Level 1 is, again, a worst-case, moving all of the DC24 FTEs into the general fund and not cutting all the, not cutting any vacancies or allowing more unbudgeted requests. So I broke it down into 12 categories. Notice the first line, salaries. The first column is what's in our current year general fund, 4,900 FTEs, that $401 million in salaries. For Level 1 budget, 5,300 FTEs, an increase of 358. Those are 90% of the ARPES or FTEs that just get moved into the general fund. That would result in a $35.4 million increase just in salaries alone. Then benefits, because you're moving all those people over, they'll go up $9 million. Our contract line is going to go up about $10.9 million. Charter school closures are projected to go up $16 million largely due to a border of regents change in our sped formulas. Transportation's projected to go up about $4 million, and so on. Till you get to the bottom, total FTEs in Level 1 go up 358 and a $77.9 million increase in expenditures. The FTE counts that you see in Level 1 contain approximately 300 ARP-funded positions, but they also include 275 vacancies. As we outline in our strategy to avoid layoffs, we are meeting with all central office departments, and the school-based budgets will bring forth some numbers. We need to cut those vacancies. If we do that, we can largely avoid layoffs. Keep in mind, we also have vacancies in the grant funds and retirees to utilize. If people start thinking differently and more creatively about our structural imbalance and our need to cut the total FTE count to avoid layoffs, we can get very close to our goal, if not exceed it. It's all going to depend upon the reactions during the budget process. I think I covered that. Edmire, next slide, please. So where are we in Level 2? Again, the objective, cut the FTEs by, reduce the FTEs by 300 and keep reducing that $100 more million deficit. The department budgets, they're due back March 15th. That's the first part of our Level 2 budget, which will be reported out to you in detail. What we're asking the departments is to enter a flat overall non-staff budgets. This goes to our strength as a district. We're not panicking. We're not saying 10% cuts across every department. There's really not much sacrifice being asked. And I'm sorry if I might be speaking a little frankly, but we are where we are, and I think we've got to keep reiterating the goals and combating misinformation. This is not a panic budget. We're asking for flat non-staff expenditures. The school-based budget process, based upon decrease in enrollments, pre-K through A classrooms were reduced by 34. After this classroom deduction, reduction, the district average pre-K class size is 21. It's 21. I'm sorry, it's 21. And no school has an average classroom of over 25. Also, this reduction in classrooms, not the first time we've done this. We've done it several times when there's adjustments to be made based on enrollments. So the books are due back to OSLs on March 11th, and they'll start analyzing them, and we'll have some summary reports for you. They will not include unbudgeted requests. The school-based budget approval meetings, this is where the OSLs have reviewed them, the Superintendent then gets involved, and we'll have final books on March 27th. My next point I want to talk about, central office reductions. Here's what I want to report here. We're looking at everything, as we said we would. We need to stop the finger-pointing. It's just divisive, not constructive, not helping anything. So let me report again on central office reductions. We're meeting with each cabinet member, and we've already reduced, I got 21 here, we had two more meetings today, we're at 30 positions cut from the budget and approximately $2.7 million. That will reduce the FTEs from the Level 1 budget and the deficit. And we're not even halfway done. Our goal is, again, this goes without the finger-pointing, our goal is to reduce the central office positions proportionately equal to the school-based reductions. But just like at the schools, where you say, oh, you can't cut that, there's stuff at the central office you can't cut. This place doesn't run itself. So we need to keep that. But we're after central office. We've already got 30. We also set another task, another tool we had to address the Level 1 deficit. The Superintendent has fully embraced an extensive internal audit program. It's not finished yet, but I feel comfortable enough to report, based on some of its findings, we'll be able to cut $1.5 million in expenditures from the Level 1 deficit, and we're going to increase $1 million as a result of those. We're working on every aspect. No one is zeroing in on just the schools and leaving central office untouched. It just so happens the schools are the largest part of our expenditures, and the enrollment drops is what's driving our structural imbalance. But we're looking at everything, everything. Keep in mind, the final legislative budget with final state aid revenues isn't due back till around March 31st. After we get some of the school-based budget numbers in, all the non-staff budget requests, along with the final state aid revenue, we will be updating you with a full set of reports. Edmire, next slide, please. Just some background on the school-based budget process. If things get really heated, you're going to see me burn out of the room, and Maria's going to have to handle it. But it's a tried and true formula that gives the schools the resources they need. And who chooses those resources? The principals in the school-based budget base. There's no dictates coming down from budget. So anyway, the resources provided to each school are based upon enrollments, which are declining, and needs. The needs are heavily considered. High needs include ELL counts, FERBL counts, which is a crazy acronym, it's a poverty measure, sped counts, and academic results. The seat projections are created for each school based on actual enrollment data. Then baseline staff, elementary teachers, encore teachers, subject, guidance, administration, they're all allocated through district-adopted formulas on that enrollment. The district-adopted formulas were last changed in '22, '23, when the allocations for assistant principals, guidance counselors, aides-in-assistance were increased. We are not changing those increases. There has been no change in the formulas for any school. Their enrollments are going down. Several departments allocate resources based on needs rather than straight enrollment. So any discussion about special ed, multi-wendor attendance should be taken off the table. They're not formula-based. They get the state mandated levels of resource. Oftentimes, that's conflated with all the other aspects. It's misleading and not constructive. Then additional funding is allocated through various sources, CFE, MAG, Turtle One, CSP, and those are based upon academic performance, demographics, and student need. No changes to any of that. Schools did not receive ARP funds in the 24-25 budgets because they no longer exist. Other funding sources have remained the same or increased year-over-year. And the last point, schools, principals, make decisions within their budget to allocate those resources to meet the needs of their specific school. There's no decisions made by central officers or anybody else. Hey, Edmire, next slide. Got a little heated there, sorry.
Spicy.
We're going to start tying in budgets to an updated four-year plan, which is also due to the State Control Board and our bondholders by June 30th. We really only discuss this once a year, although myself, Finance Dean, I review it weekly. We manage our finances in the short term with detailed reviews of current year spending versus our approved budget, monthly monitoring of numerous critical variables, quarterly reports, which we submit to the board, and our cash flow management. But more importantly, we manage our district finances according to a four-year plan that incorporates the projected consequences of decisions we make every budget year on our front balance. Give you a couple of examples. Our financial analysis of the new BTF contract included reducing total budgeted BTF staff by 160 vacancies due to declining enrollments. I know that's been reviewed, and I brought the document today and the emails that I submitted to their financial people in Albany. The current four-year plan also includes 160 vacant BTF positions. Be either eliminated, and if we don't do that, we're going to just cut all the ARPES, 300 positions. It was going to be one or the other. Our current approved four-year plan, which was adopted by this board on June 9th, includes the following notes and data, top page six. I won't go into reading it all, but what it's, oh, guess I will, it's on the... Gap closing measures, structural issues, will likely become necessary at some point during the plan. We will need to focus on the structure of our schools, both in terms of numbers, number of staff, number of students, et cetera. At the bottom is the table of data showing that structural imbalance. Why I bring, why I cut and paste this, we're very proactive in our financial management, but we're also transparent. We've told everybody that we're aware of not only the financial cliff, but the structural imbalance, and we told everybody that we're going to have to address it during the four-year plan. That time is now. Okay. Edmire, next slide. Just some summary remarks. All of us must approach the 24-25 budget front with a new mindset. It incorporates both the economic realities of the financial cliff, but the lower enrollments that are impacting school districts all over the state. Our budget decisions have to be data-driven with an eye toward the four-year plan. Now, we're in a better position to... in a better position to deal with these challenges than most districts. That's why the misinformation and it's not constructive. We've been saying this. Most districts will enact much more severe measures to deal with both their structural imbalance, school closings, and the end of ARPAS funding guaranteed by us. We're not talking about either of those. Our plan revolves around flat, non-staff budgets for the departments. Live within your budget. You know, we don't need a new program every week. And now I'm getting a little, and to address the structural imbalance, a hiring freeze, cutting vacancies. No unbudgeted requests under the school-based budget process. As I just outlined, they get the resources they need based upon their actual enrollments and the needs of their student population. So the four-year plan is the key financial plan and tool for the district. It incorporates our future projections. It incorporates future-year projections for the decisions we made this year, and it's impacting our front balance. And that's why I say, if we just turn our heads and accept that level one budget, well, that goes into the four-year plan and then accumulates. We would be insolvent. We're not going to do it. I just wanted to show you the mechanics of financial tools. Lastly, this is a big one. Say we're successful in our plan to cut vacancies and no unbudgeted requests. Well, there's not going to be very many vacancies next year. And that's fine, but we need to understand from a financial planning and cash flow perspective, there's no longer going to be any substantial vacancy savings. So Mrs. Ward and Mrs. Kotman, you're going to have to think about something else to yell at me about. Those go away. Every position is filled, but we didn't have any layoffs. We simply have to manage better with the resources provided in the big budget. Even at the department level, too. No more unbudgeted requests. Create your budget in the current year, live within your resources, and we're going to have a very, very successful next budget year. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Jim. That was fantastic. And I do just want to kind of reiterate, you know, we touched on the school-based budgets a little bit today, and I know that there's been a lot of conversation and miscommunications out there with regard to the school-based budgets. And I think it's just really important to understand that those numbers aren't pulled from the sky as we're creating that space and we're moving into this phase of the process. There is a formula that is put forth every year. It is discussed, it is evaluated, it's based on seat projections that we see, right? So enrollment numbers and then seat projections within the school using data, historical data, and specialized needs determine this formula. And that formula is not something that is just decided upon and moved around. Then it goes to the superintendent and the cabinet and they look at it and have the ability to determine whether or not a change is required. And it's important to understand, and I've been educated in this, so that's why I'm sharing it now, is that that number doesn't go down. That formula is not going down. If anything, the formula goes up and adds, right? That's what happens because it's based on the need. It's looking at what our district needs in this moment. And right now, we've decided, and it's been decided, that the formula is remaining the same. It's not going down. It's not going up. It's remaining the same. And that is okay. And I think what we've heard and what we continue to hear is that change is here. It's imminent. We can't pretend it's not going to happen and it's not going to exist. But in all spaces, creativity is being encouraged and taking a realistic picture as to where we're at and what we need to do in order to move forward, right, to keep us operating in a great space. Chief Barnes and I had the pleasure of presenting to the common council last week, and, you know, was very surprised by the reaction we received from the council. There were several members of the council that praised the district for openly, willingly, transparently having conversation and recognizing that we need to take ownership of the budget and what we're doing and how it's working and strive for the most efficient operating budget as possible. And they praised us for taking that leap and publicly having that conversation and actually cited themselves maybe needing to take a lesson from us and do the same. So that was quite an interesting experience while we were there. So I do want to open the floor to any questions that there might I guess so. And nobody's said anything. So Larry, go for it.
All right. Chief Barnes, thank you for the presentation. I think this is the first time I've seen this language on the school-based budgeting process with the formula. Maybe I saw it before, but it's the first time it's really kind of resonating with me because it always seemed very vague as to how the district determines positions that they're funding in each school. So it's a formula that applies to every single school in the district. It's the same formula.
Everyone the same way.
Same way. And obviously, enrollment is a huge piece of
Huge.
that formula. So three things that I want to just lift up, two of which you mentioned. The state legislature still needs to weigh in on this budget by the end of March, beginning of April. So that could change revenue. Charter school expenditure increasing by 16 million when we don't have a new charter school opening for the next school year for the first time in I don't know how long, which is, again, it grows our expenditure for charter schools up to 175 million. That's something that city and state officials need to be very aware of and how it's impacting us financially. And then the last thing, Ben from the Buffalo News did a great piece on this, that the city and the accounts that holds our money and the interest that has accumulated from those funds, we've projected or you've projected it could be up to $5 million. And we're currently not getting at this point that $5 million. So that, I just want people to be aware of that. It's our funds, it's interest that's been accumulated on our funding that we deserve, and it seems as if the laws are in our favor for us to get that interest. The last thing that I keep harping on, I want to be sure that we are doing the least amount of harm to our students and to our schools and minimizing the reductions of direct instruction and direct service to our students. Regardless of where we are financially, I have been bringing this up for years, our coaches, teachers who are coaches, ETF members that are coaches, teachers on special assignment, coordinators, which honestly, I was not fully aware of till I think this budget season, where I'm hearing about coordinators. And then obviously, we've had an uptick in administrators, mostly assistant principals over the past year or two. So this question isn't directed to you. It's more to Dr. Williams, the superintendent, and probably some cabinet members, and probably can't be answered again tonight. But I still would like to see a breakdown on how many coaches we have, where they are assigned, same thing with TOSSAs, coordinators, all the administrators, how they have increased over the past few years, you know, whether they're in central office, whether they're in our buildings, and then what their roles are. Because it seems as if when I, some of them serve important roles in our buildings, and then others, it seems vague, and it seems like some of them, for lack of a better term, act as pseudo-administrators. And if they could, if they're certified and able to provide mental health services directly to our students or provide reading support to our students, then I think that's what we should be really looking at closely to determine if we can start making some changes, which will not only help us financially, but will, I think, help in delivering the best instruction and services directly to our students in our
So what I can share, it's very interesting, and Chief Barnes probably could answer this because I did request just last week, just for informational purposes, to find out where are all of our TOSSAs and how many TOSSAs do we have. And so we'll keep drilling down, but we've already begun to look at, you know, where we have teachers on special assignment, you know, coaches, coordinators, and what the work is that they're doing and what the impact is. Of course, we're going to talk with principals and, you know, central office folks, but we have already begun to pull that information.
Thank you.
I have no intention on calling on individual board members because if you don't have a question or comment, there's no reason to come up with one. So if you do have something to say, thank you, President Kotman.
I have my hand up also, Cindy. Thank you.
Go with the pens that have already been up. I see Kathy's hand and then Terrence Hurd's hand was up. Then I'll go.
All right. Dr. Evans Brown?
Thank you, Chair. I didn't have much, but thank you, Jim Barnes, as always. A very detailed presentation today on the big picture. One of the things I didn't see, or you didn't allude to, and maybe I overlooked it, but, well, let me back up. I think I'm liking the fact that the budget is aligning with student outcome governance. That is such exciting news for us as board members. I don't see, though, where, when we talk about cuts, and you may not can answer this, but the overtime, is that being addressed?
Very much so. And again, I think we're going to add a tipping point in another way, something that's been known and maybe ignored for years. This superintendent has fully embraced an extensive internal audit. It's not finished yet, but it's gone. Follow the form that I can project out and will incorporate in the level two budget, $1 million a year in savings.
Fantastic.
Yeah. That's under that line, audit results.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Board member Hurd?
Okay. Thank you, Chairwoman, and thank you, Mr. Barnes and Superintendent, for putting together such a very detailed presentation today, which should rest some of the minds of our staff members and teachers accordingly. Just a couple of questions. I'd really like to really congratulate you on this incentive to reduce, consolidate classrooms, especially for our English, English learners, so that they can get a better education and moving forward. You know, they could be in a better learning environment and not extending larger-sized classrooms above 21. So I would think that that's a very, very innovative move that was done and very creative and took a lot of structure and timing and reaching out to parents. So I really appreciate that. And we had some good feedback already from a couple of parents already at some community meetings. I know that our population is down here in the city of Buffalo and this trend is still, is going to continue to go down, as projected. So just moving ahead, seeing that our student population will be diminished more, do we seem like that our state aid is going to be affected by that also? Or will we find some type of continuity with state aid?
No, very much so. The largest factor that drives our foundation aid, our largest revenue item, is enrollment based. True, I'd like to just follow up on your first comments. The enrollment decreases are slowing. However, when I say structural imbalance, this goes to unprecedented increases in state aid. The federal ARPA has allowed us to not address the decline in enrollment over the last five years. It's just like the bill has come due. State aid, large state increases are gone. There is no more ARPAS. So now we just got to address these issues.
Thank you. And I know that, I know that we said there was no charter schools in the city of Buffalo, but I heard that there was one that was projected to come to Sloan, which would affect us also. So that might be something that, you know, we really should take a look into. My next question would be only based upon summer school. Everybody release any type of summer school plans or how that would be effective with summer school?
Yeah, Super, do you want to take this one?
Yeah, we're looking at that piece also, summer school. We probably will not have as robust a summer school as we've had in the past, where our summer school program sort of mirrored what Say Yes was doing because we were able to do that. So it's possible that, you know, we'll work more closely with Say Yes for our K through six. And then we'll take a look at seven through 12 and see, you know, how we can get the most that we can for our students. We're still looking to have our learn while you earn, you know, for our 12th graders that are right on the cusp of graduating, but we're not leaving any stone unturned. So we're looking at summer school.
Okay. Yeah, I had a lot of concerns about full days and half a days and class sizes of summer school and where they would be, what's projection would be. So just wanted to make sure, I know by state mandate, all our kids will have access to summer school, seven through 12, and it's just some concerns about that that keep reapproaching. The last thing is that I was invited and I spoke with the Chicago district also from the Q convention. And, you know, we collaborate and we talk about, you know, different plans that they have. And one of the interesting things that they've done was to work with colleges in Chicago, and they've been, you know, fired their language barriers there because they had a lot of asylum seekers that came up to Chicago that's residing here now. But they had a lot of colleges, you know, and that also they have interns that come in as reading teachers and/or speech teachers. They call them speech teachers. And so they come in there and work with the kids inside the classrooms and they do it as like internships. So it's helped the teachers out a lot and helped with their budgets. So if we have any interest in reaching out to our universities here in Western York area, maybe that could be a possible thing that we can help, you know, with our classroom sizes and the ability to understand and learn English language.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairwoman.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. President Felton Kotman?
Thank you for your presentation. I do have some questions, and you knew they were coming. So I think we do this at least once a year, if I remember right. So at the beginning of your presentation, you said that there were no unbudgeted requests that were being entertained and that they are responsible in part for the mess that you currently have. And I want to ask you the question, what was the reason behind the board putting in or requesting unbudgeted requests? Do you remember why?
I know your focus, but I could also add to that, Mrs. Kotman, that the schools sort of felt they're going to get whatever they asked for and that they can apply pressure with certain board members. Because if you took a full review, I do understand your your
Oh, you're going down there. Come on now. You're coming down the lane now. You're setting yourself up.
I understand, but then also
Letting you know.
They do take responsibility. I can give you a full review of those unbudgeted requests. The majority of them had no direct impact on the classroom.
Okay. So now, let's go back. At the beginning of your presentation, you said that it was a school-based budget for 2024, '25 budgeted update. At the bottom, it said equity for all and all we do. Further, in your presentation, okay, you talked about the needs that are being looked at, the high priority needs. In there, there was nothing listed for social and emotional or behavior issues. Post-COVID, the fact that that's not a priority Post-COVID, the fact that that's not a priority, a high priority, is a very concern for me when we're being criticized for suspensions and we're being criticized for children not coming to school, our attendance being low. So on one hand, we acknowledge that we have problems. How you want to paint the picture is unbudgeted requests was a result of board members putting pressure or whatever. Unbudgeted requests was designed to make the plan feel even for the schools that were not receiving the support that they should have received. Okay, and so that's why unbudgeted requests was put in place. Okay, whether, irregardless from your perspective, they did not make it to the classroom. The principal was able to justify with the superintendent, not the board member, the superintendent that they needed this support in their building. As we look at some of the behaviors, now I've said this since I've been on the board. Why we don't have a benchmark, a basic standard of what each school should look like is amazing to me. Why we don't say, why we don't have certain levels that if, if it goes over, we address it or whatever. When we look at the visions and values of this community, they are complaining about suspensions. They are complaining about the way children are behaving in the streets. Unfortunately, it all falls on Buffalo Public Schools because we have not had an increase from the city in upwards of 20, 2000, oh, excuse me, 20 years. Excuse me. Okay, so I wanted to point that out, that that is why unbudgeted requests came in. When we started having a conversation as a board about what equity looks like, it was determined by the board that there was a need and the superintendent agreed. This didn't start with Dr. Williams. It went with. He agreed. He agreed that there was an issue with certain things are happening in certain buildings that require additional support. But my biggest thing throughout this entire budget process in the full tenure that I have been here is that there is no accountability for the, for the ownership of the data. And what I mean by that is we systematically see certain schools get children that are going into high school reading at a below level. They get all of those kids, but no one steps up and says, yo, the ownership piece for the data, we sent all these children reading at a certain level into this building. We did that from the registration department. We made sure that these builders didn't receive it. So there is nothing put in place for the non-criteria schools, nothing. You have everything in place for your criteria schools, but yet there is not a way to weight that formula to make sure that non-criteria schools who are getting the kids who are not reading at the level that children are reading at our, our criteria schools or at our higher level schools. No ownership happens from the district. And that's my biggest problem with this budget process. And when I first came on the board in 2011, I was told that it was going to get fixed. You weren't around. That was Barbara, that was Barbara Smith. Okay, under Jeff. It's going to get fixed. Okay, the whole process is broken if it does not take into consideration what's happening in each individual building, not just based on numbers. We as a, if we're doing this student effective government, where the board is effective, excuse me, board effective governance, if the board is effective, then we should not be talking just about bodies. We should be talking about equity. And that's why I have a concern with what's going on. Now, in the past, what we did when we had difficult budgets, we would look at each individual department. I mean, they had meetings where they would bring in us and we would sit down and they would pick out everything in this budget. They would tell us how much money they spent last year, how much money they're planning to spend this year. I think there's a need to take a look at certain things that you shared today. I would like to take a look at the expenditures. The expenditures are going up 7%. I like to know where they're going up at and what departments or whatever. Okay.
You will see that after we get the school-based budget and the non-staff and then you will see just what you're asking for.
Okay, good, because I want to make sure that we can see those things. When you put there, there's no increase in Medicare, it's staying the same. Then I have to ask a question. Are we billing for every service that we should be billing for, for Medicaid? Medicaid, I'm sorry, not Medicare, Medicaid. You know, that's the question that I'm asking. I'm just asking it. I don't expect you to answer it, but I'm just asking that question. Because it seems like to me if the needs are getting, going up for the children, that we should also be seeing our billing going up in regards to the children. But that's just my way of thinking and maybe I'm wrong. Okay, is that, you know, so what I'm trying to do here is get an understanding because if we're not going to do any unbudgeted requests, then I want you to take, somebody to take ownership of the data in the buildings that you're sending kids there that are reading at a level one and other kids, others, just other schools have similar formula and those kids are reading at a level four. And I want you to explain to me why children that are reading at a level four are the same, this, this, gets, get the same resources that a kid, a group of kids that are reading at a level one. So this is the type of stuff I'm talking about. And finally, get off my soapbox, because I do this every year. Just play the, play the, play the video, okay? Special ed, there, the special ed report it, and correct me if I'm wrong, a $2 million savings this year, was that 2 million?
I'm not aware of that.
What was it? It was 200,000? What was it? I remember a number that they said that they were saving money from.
I am not aware of that number.
Okay, so I'm, I'm out having a nice fried fish fry and I get my ear blown off about the amount of students that were taken out of FAWK and put directly in the classroom and no supports were given. Okay, and I can tell you, I won't even get into the schools over, over the air. But I want to know what's going on with special ed to make sure that the needs of those high need students are addressed. Okay, I'm sorry if you don't like what I'm saying. It's, I mean, I'm sorry if I'm offending board members, but at the end of the day, I've sat here long enough to deserve the right to say whatever I want to say. Thank you.
If I can just say one piece, you know, all of the board members, we want to hear from you. We want to hear from you, you know, that's, that's what the committee meetings are all about. I just want to address the unbudgeted request. I think what the chief said is that at this time, while we're in the process of trying to, you know, work through things, that there were no unbudgeted requests. We didn't say forever, but just at this time, while we're waiting to see, you know, we're just about at the end of the school year now. So, you know, we're just saying for right now.
No, but he said that that was the reason why, partly the reason why we had the financial problems that we had. Okay, was because of these unbudgeted people. Okay, he said that. And so I got the impression that it was off the table in that, in that script completely.
Superintendent is correct in, as she's outlined to me and we've discussed it, as, as I stated here, at the present time. We need to get the numbers settled and at the present time, then you will see a level two budget report. And we'll discuss that, but the superintendent will really be poring over that to look for any needs that were missed.
So equity will eventually be put in this equation is what you're saying.
It will be, it will be.
Okay, that wasn't clear.
Okay, yeah, it will be. But, you know, I just want to say to the board and to everyone listening that, you know, we've been able to give pretty much everything that schools have been asking for, happily so. This is going to be a hard year because for the first time, you know, data is going to be a big part of, you know, whether or not we'll be able to give all of the schools everything that they're asking for. We probably will not be able to do that. And it's going to be a hard decision on, you know, whether we can or we can't. And so we have to use our data and look at the impact of what, you know, they're asking for. If they've had it for the last three years, what the impact of that has been. So I just want to say to the board, you know, like I've been saying to parents and, and staff that have been advocating for different positions to, you know, be patient. We're going to continue to be transparent. I think, you know, whenever you're talking about money and/or children, you know, it gets passionate, the higher, higher conversations. So, you know, we come to the meetings expecting that.
Superintendent. Thank you for answering my questions, Madam Superintendent, and thank you for being tolerant of me after sitting here for 13 years and seeing that the same process continues every year and we have to beg for certain roles and certain things. Where other board members may be apathetic and think that it doesn't start before the budget level two happens. What we have now is a lot of frustration because people realize that they have greater needs than that has been reflected in this budget. And that's where the frustration is coming back to the board members and it's coming back in big numbers. And I also want to say that, and Cindy, Madam Chair, before you exit out of your meeting, I would like to ask one question of the board before they leave so that they can consider this question because it has been brought to me and I want to do it in open forum. And it is in regards to the budget somewhat as well. So thank you.
Thank you. I think Paulette, Board Member Woods, did you have a question, comment?
Yes.
I just wanted to know, we're, we're a little bit over time and I.
No, mine's very brief. Mine is very brief. Just, just two things that I wanted to thank the superintendent and Chief Barnes for making it very clear and transparent that 30 positions and $2.7 million has already been designated as cuts from central office. That is equity, equity being, spreading the cuts over indirect positions. That's very important. We're getting a lot of feedback on that and I'm glad you pointed that out. And then the only other comment to our Chief Barnes, excellent presentation, but as far as vacancies, there's always turnover. So there will always be vacancies. And that $5 million in interest may help us out. Those are my only comments.
Thank you, Board Member Woods. President Felton Kotman, I wanted to open the floor to you. I know you have something you wanted to share before we wrap up. You are muted.
Mr. Hurd's hand is up.
Board Member Hurd, you have more questions, comments?
I'll just keep it brief. I know that this, administrative staff members have been under a lot of pressure lately. But I know that Dr. Williams, the head is something from the previous administration where administrators were working dual, dual positions or dual jobs or sometimes one or two, three different positions. And I know they still work in that capacity. So just like to say, thank you for all the work that you guys are doing and thank you for, for, for staying here with this district as we go through these struggles and times and now we go through budget areas that's critical. It's critical that, that we get this straight this time and encourage the board to continue to work together, work with the, with this, this district and be cordial as we move forward and that we can work together and get things accomplished. So thank you. Thank you, Chairwoman.
Thank you, Board Member Hurd. President Felton Kotman, you have a final thought.
Well, what I have is a question that was brought to me that we need to address. And I guess we can do it via email or whatever. But the question is, and many of you know, I have children, I have grandchildren as well as nieces and nephews that are in Buffalo Public Schools in large number. But the question that was brought to me is what involvement should a board member have in the school's base budget plan? Since the board, since the board member already has one vote. And the concern is, is that, and typically when I attend a school-based budget meeting, I am there typically just to listen. Sometimes the principals bring me in because of some things that are going on. But the question is, what came up was, is that the school-based management team may have different ideas, but they are afraid of alienating the board members. And so we need to have that, we can have a conversation, or we can wait until next week if you want. But that question has been asked of me as the president. I have discussed it with the superintendent and I'm trying to get a clear understanding of what the board feels should be the case. Because what cannot happen is, is that, you know, staff feels intimidated or not eager to express themselves because we're in the room and we impede the process. And that's a concern that's going on, that has been going on for a while and it's brought to my attention. So if someone wants to speak on it now, or we can move it back over to next week into the Educational Support Committee. But that is a question and I think we have to ethically ask that question of the board. We don't want to, you know, I fill in the gap for my kids, my sons with their children when they can't do certain things. But the question is, in regards to this particular process that's going on now, particularly with the budgets, what, what, what we're, what should we be and what, what is our role? And that's, that's the question. Okay?
Chairwoman, I don't know if you see our hands, but Jen has a hand to respond and I do too.
I cannot see the hand, so I appreciate you letting me know because I cannot see them on the screen. So thank you. Dr. Evans Brown or Board Member McCosey, either one of you, go for it.
Jen, you were first. All right, I can go. Doesn't matter.
I just, I just wanted to say quickly, I never looked into it, but I assumed that it would be a conflict of interest or it wouldn't be something that would be productive when I was asked to be on the SBMT team for my, my son. Wasn't in my district, waterfront is, is Board Member Woods' district. I am a parent and I'm a parent, all my kids went to waterfront, so I do have skin in the game there. But I just felt and declined because I felt that it was, it would put people in positions where they felt like they had to appease me or maybe they wouldn't come with everything they needed. I just felt like I would be more of a hurdle than productive in that space. I didn't know, and I honestly thought that it wasn't, we aren't supposed to, but I never asked. So that's, it's a good question because I wrestled with it and just said no.
Thank you.
Okay, for me, when my youngest child was in school at performing arts, I was asked to be on the school-based management team and I was, I was not a board member, so I felt comfortable as a parent. I do also have nieces and nephews in the school district as well. And I agree Jen, it could be a conflict. Being on, being a parent, at this time, I would decline. That's my take on it as well.
Any other opinions? Because we're going to have to consider our next steps on this because it's coming up on a regular basis, unfortunately. I just think the presence of a board member intimidates some people. Yes, Mr., I'm sorry, yes.
So are we saying that we cannot vote on the school-based budget as board members? Or we cannot, or we also cannot participate in SBMT and school-based budgeting?
Well, we're not saying anything. We're asking at this point, we're trying to get an understanding. Is it fair for a board member to be in a, in a, in a meeting with staff? And, and, and it's the superintendent's boss is what it boils down to. Okay? So is it fair in that process that do, is there an unfair advantage or disadvantage to staff as a result, the result of it? And so we want to ask that question.
President Felton Kotman, I'm just, because this is kind of new to me, so I'm just wondering, and I don't recall reading anything, but we don't have like a policy or any process that we, that's why this is being brought up, right? Like in terms of, okay.
It's being brought up, it's being brought up as a result of conversations around the budget is why it's coming up. Okay? And, you know, you know, the history of the school-based management situation. We have been before the state as a result of this. So I want to make sure. So I want to make sure that whatever we do is proper and we have a policy to support it. But we were taken before the state at one point since I've been on the board about the management of the school-based management teams. I don't know if you guys remember that, but it wasn't pretty at that time at all. And so I just think that we need to have that conversation. We will move it to legal. And we'll ha- ask legal to weigh in and we'll move it to the next level. But that's the reason for, uh, asking that. They, uh, undue pressure, uh, is felt when a board member, and you should know that because when you walk into a school, you know, how the impact of having a board member in the building impacts us. So I don't want to take any more of your time. Thank you for the, uh, five minute discussion.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, I think we covered all comments, questions. Dr. Williams, if you don't have a farewell, I'm going to say farewell to everybody and wrap up tonight's meeting. Uh, have a great evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're safe.
Take care.